I'd like to call to order the January seventh, twenty twenty-five meeting of the regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission for the Town of Chino Valley. Commissioner Passiak, would you lead us in the pledge?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have one empty seat. I believe that's because we have that person moved into the town council. Good luck to that gentleman. Okay, so we'll move to item C, the consent calendar, which is basically the approval of the December third, twenty twenty-three meeting minutes. Everybody had a chance to take a look at them. Right.
I make the motion to accept them?
Pardon?
I make the motion to accept the minutes?
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in two seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thank you. Alright, so we're gonna move forward to item D one, which is TA twenty twenty-four dash oh four Utility Scale Solar. A request to amend the Town of Chino Valley Unified Development Ordinance Chapter Four Regulations to provide requirements for the consideration of placement, design, development criteria, and ultimate removal of large utility generation facilities to ensure that such facilities protect the natural environment and native wildlife of Chino Valley to provide a direct benefit to the Town of Chino Valley, are compatible with the neighboring uses and landowners, and is safety safely operated during their lifecycle. Has anybody spoken with anybody outside the commission meeting tonight about this project? I've spoken with what is now Councilman Switzer on this item at length several different times. Okay, so staff presentation, Will.
Alright.
Before he starts, Mr. Chairman, would you like to ask for all the speaker request cards?
We have those here. Is anybody not filled out a card? Because if you don't fill out a card, can't talk. Thank you. Thank you for the reminder. Alright, Will.
Alrighty. Good evening. Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of Commission, Will Denji, Assistant Director for Development Services here with the Town of Chino Valley. As read tonight's item before you is the second or part two of text amendment twenty twenty-four oh four Utility Scale Solar Ordinance. This first went before the commission back on November fifth of twenty twenty-four, and it is returning to you tonight for further discussion. Before we get into the presentation, I did just want to clarify, we did get a couple of inquiries this week regarding the item tonight. This is not a request for zone change. This is not a project approval. This is not approving the Draconis project or anything like that tonight. Tonight is simply the ordinance that would outline the ground rules and the project requirements if a utility scale solar project were to come into the Town of Chino Valley limits. So just to recap some of the key takeaways from the November fifth meeting, staff was to refine the solar facility use permit process. We did so within your staff report. There is a draft ordinance that has a whole bunch of new blue words and sentences in there. That is the any new addition on there. Anything that did not change is still left in the typical black text font. Additionally, there were concerns brought up about fire mitigation measures and its effectiveness from both the public and the commission, setbacks to residential and the Peavine Trail, impact on property values, water usage, weed maintenance, and herbicide usage, along with drainage issues. Additionally, we did receive concerns in the form of letters as well as just comments from representatives in the solar development community. Within your packet, it included two letters that we received, one from Prospect fourteen, the other one from Light Source BP. You were forwarded an additional comment letter that I believe came in last week from a local Arizona pro-solar organization called RSIA or Arizona Solar Energy Industry Association. We did email that to you, and staff has printed out copies of all three of those letters for distribution tonight. So not to cover all of them, but to represent their large concerns, we do have those listed on the left-hand side of this table on your screen. The right hand shows current town code, what the proposal is. At this point in town or at this point in time, town staff has not incorporated any of the proposed changes from the developers into this ordinance. A lot of the proposals go against what or contradicts what was the product from the year that staff and the Staff Advisory Solar Committee worked on and produced. We felt that we could not unilaterally make that decision, so we wanted to air that out in the public tonight here and then give that opportunity out for discussion and see if there was anything worth including in the ordinance. So just going down from the top, both RSIA and BP did advocate for the elimination of the acreage caps, or at least increasing it. RSIA specifically cited the city of Eloy as it allows sixteen percent of its total land for the development of solar. Chino Valley's current code proposal would be thirty-eight hundred acres match max or nine point five percent of incorporated Chino Valley. RSIA and Prospect fourteen proposed to reduce in the battery energy storage system setback from developed residential land. RSIA advocated for a hundred and fifty-foot separation from residential property. The Prospect fourteen did ask for alleviation to that as they do or a reduction in it as the project does not as, excuse me, further setbacks on the best from the interconnection points do not promote free conductive or effective operation of a solar facility. Current proposal under town code or the proposed ordinance is that the best is either gonna be setback a mile from the developed residential or central of the project, whatever is greater. RSIA requests that a reduction in the solar or the setbacks, excuse me, for solar field panels to one hundred feet from a residential structure. Current code as written would be setbacks of a quarter mile or thirteen hundred and twenty feet from a property line of a developed residential lot. RSIA did request for a reduction between the separation between projects to five hundred feet. Excuse me. Along with Prospect fourteen and BP, but Prospect fourteen did actually support the three-mile separation, but they wanted the separation from property line to be changed from property line to equipment. Current proposal is three miles between projects. RSIA and Prospect fourteen both advocated for some form of waiver or a provision of waivers to town code. Staff heard this one pretty loud and clear from both the county and county ordinance and then public participation on this. No waivers. Understand that projects are specific and they do have unique challenges, but you gotta work with what we're proposing. RSIA also advocated for the elimination of noise restrictions, or at least increasing it to sixty-five decibels. Town code currently is or town code for the proposal would be fifty-five max during the day, forty during the night. RSIA again did advocate for an increase in panel height to twenty feet. Max panel height for the proposal is fifteen feet. Again, they did advocate to increase the allowable maximum grade to be buildable to increase that from five to eight percent. And then finally, Prospect fourteen requested that we change construction hours to six AM to seven PM, seven days a week versus the construction hours proposed of eight AM to five PM, Monday through Friday. Alright, so public and commission concerns. Starting off with fire mitigation, concerns regarding the adequacy of fire mitigation matters measures, particularly for battery energy storage systems, best, and the need for enhanced protections. Currently, the twenty twenty-four building codes are under review and expected to be adopted by the end of twenty twenty-five. Within those codes, there are sections that pertain specifically to battery storage protections, and these will be become these will become laws for the Town of Chino Valley. Staff is also researching protections from other jurisdictions that could enhance the fire mitigation plan requirements. Under the proposed language, the Central Arizona Fire Medical Authority, CAFMA, must approve projects, a project's fire mitigation plan as they are the responding agency in emergencies. If they do not approve their fire mitigation plan to their satisfaction, there will be no project, and that is how this proposal is currently written. Since mitigation measures will vary based on the specifics of each project, staff recommends no change to the ordinance as written as these requirements will be addressed during the project's initial process. Setbacks, reconsideration of the current quarter-mile setback requirement from Peavine Trail and developed residential land. So for the Peavine Trail, staff is recommending no change to the quarter-mile setback from the Peavine Trail. Currently, land along the Peavine Trail and areas that have the potential to be developed as one of these utility facilities is zoned industrial directly against the Peavine Trail. Industrial zoning allows for the most intense uses within the town, along with a maximum building height of thirty-five feet with a setback of only fifty feet from the edge of the Peavine Trail. Any solar projects is proposed to have a quarter-mile setback from the Peavine. Staff believes that the quarter-mile setback provides much greater protection of the Peavine Trail than the existing industrial zoning setbacks of fifty feet along the trail. So we're recommending no change to the Peavine. Regarding residential, staff is recommending discussion with the commission to evaluate the current quarter-mile setback proposed for the developed residential land. So I will, at the conclusion of this presentation, have a slide of the key points that we need to discuss or staff is recommending to discuss at minimum this evening, and that will be one of them. Property values. Perceived property value impacts adjacent to utility scale solar projects. In the twenty nineteen article on planning for utility scale solar energy facilities, Darren Coffey, AICP, shared that the impacts of utility scale solar facilities is typically negligible on neighboring property values. Staff does not believe that the county assessor will devalue property near solar fields. However, private property owners may perceive their land to have lost value. Staff is recommending no change be made to the ordinance specific on this as this impact is specific to the individual projects and not the ordinance itself. Water usage. Quantity of water for facilities you or excuse me, water used in facilities and day-to-day operations and its resulting impact on the aquifer. Water estimated if a battery fire broke out, just a couple of concerns that came up. So this is one of the ones that staff did make changes to. Staff recommends the creation of section F eleven, water usage, as part of the required project standards. This new section will require developers to submit a comprehensive water usage plan that includes water source assessment, sustainability, and usage, along with water recycling and reuse. The addition of section F eleven will ensure a detailed evaluation of water usage for the project area and complement the fire mitigation plan already required for project submission. Property maintenance specifically to herbicide. How weed growth would be managed and herbicide expected to be used. These concerns were brought up regarding potential contamination of aquifer from the herbicides. Staff is recommending that the creation of section F ten, property maintenance as part of the required project standards. Within this section, a developer will be required to submit a property maintenance plan that includes the element of weed control and herbicide application on site. Drainage concerns. What happens to the water runoff? And then there were questions raised about water recharge and reclamation of runoff for aquifer recharge. Staff is recommending the creation of section F one C, which establishes the requirement of a stormwater pollution prevention plan as part of the project's middle. If determined necessary, the project's drainage plan may also include a stormwater reclamation and recharge component. So just to recap the changes made by staff. We refine the solar facility use permit process. It helps clarify the application, review, and approval steps for both the preliminary and final solar facility use permits. Two, weed maintenance plan requires developers to submit a weed maintenance plan, property maintenance plan, to ensure ongoing property maintenance and mitigate environmental impacts. Water usage plan mandates the submission of a water usage plan, including water source identification, usage estimates, recycling strategies for construction and operation phases. And then finally, drainage plan, require a comprehensive drainage plan, including a stormwater pollution prevention plan to address pre-construction, construction, and post-construction stormwater management. So four discussion points that staff is recommending that we hit at a minimum. Adequacy of the revised solar facility use permit process, ensure we hit what we wanted to. Any additional inclusions of the fire mitigation plan or enhancements specific to the best or the fire mitigation plan as itself. Three, potential adjustments to setbacks for residential areas and the Peavine. And four, policy consideration regarding cumulative acreage limits and potential variances based on project-specific merits. So that is staff's recommendation for discussion points. Staff does recommend that the commission forward a recommendation of something to town council for the text amendment TA twenty twenty-four oh four as presented in the staff report, subject to the changes made this evening. So we'll go ahead and open it up for questions and discussion from the commission.
Well, I have one question. On the stormwater prevention plan, I didn't see it in the text of the of the ordinance. Should be under the. Maybe I overlooked it, you know, my glasses might have been.
Should be.
So one C here, developers shall provide the drainage plan and stormwater.
There it is, yes, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else have questions? Yes, Commissioner Penn. Pull that microphone down so they can hear you, please.
If a project was to get approved, what is the dollar benefit to Chino Valley?
So it'd be subject to what we were looking at if we were doing the thirty-eight hundred total acres, it was anywhere between two to three million dollars a year for the Town of Chino Valley.
We're looking at between five hundred and a thousand dollars per acre per year.
Per year. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now that, just to clarify, that is for the life of the project.
Yes, it is.
Until the project is decommissioned and removed. Okay. Any other questions? Will, I'm sure we're gonna call you back.
Absolutely.
Okay, so we're gonna open the public portion of this meeting. Anybody been to a zoning meeting here before? Right, veterans. So the rules are, please be concise, please be polite, respectful, don't be repetitive. If somebody has already said what you would like to say, you may step up to the microphone and just say, I concur with all of above people that have spoke before me. It gets noted. I keep pretty good notes up here. And you're gonna get three minutes to speak with the clock, and that lady right there is gonna be the timekeeper. When you step up to the microphone, you'll state your name and where you live, just so we know who you are. And then you'll get three minutes to speak, and then at the end of that three minutes, you'll be asked to step down so the next person can get their opportunity to speak. Alright, thank you. These are stacked in order of Chino Valley folks get to speak first, county folks get to speak second, and other folks get to speak at the end. So the first lady is, and if I speak your name wrong, please correct me. I try to do what I can do with what I see here. Rhonda Clermoni or Chormoni? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Rhonda Ceremony. I live in Firesky Lane in Chino Valley. I have five points of concern. The land use, Chino Valley general plan approved on June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four designates ranch agricultural and open space areas as suitable for solar development under the land use clarification. Utility scale solar projects, given the size, infrastructure requirements, and potential impacts on surrounding communities, should be classified as commercial land use. Water concerns. A critical issue on the source of water from these utility scale projects. Additionally, there is no clear plan to address the financial responsibility if wells go dry due to the significant aquifer withdraws on a solar utility scale solar. The concern is especially pertinent, given that such issues already exist in Chino Valley and the tri greater tri-city area, since Prescott and Prescott Valley get water from Chino. It is imperative that the ordinance includes provisions to ensure that future property owners are legally bound to adhere to the conditions agreed upon by the original project owner, because a lot of these sites get sold once they're completed. This should be explicitly covered, long-term maintenance, and decommissioning responsibilities of the new owners. It is unclear whether a consultation with CAFMA has been conducted regarding fire suppression measures and other public safety concerns associated with the solar project. Such consultation should be required before the ordinance is approved, rather than reactive to public safety planning. The ordinance appears to me to have been written with a specific project in mind, which raises concern about fairness and transparency in the process. It is critical to establish a clear and equitable framework and prioritize long-term interests of the community over individual commercial entities. Thank you.
Thank you. No, folks, I know you all wanna support each other by applauding, but it slows the meeting down, and I'd appreciate it if we could keep that to the very bare minimum. Okay, next person is Karen Estoroz.
I'm Karen Estoroz, and I live at seventeen seventy-five South Johnson Lane in Chino Valley. I'm diametrically opposed to this whole project, and I totally concur with what the woman before me just said, and didn't move here to have all this implode on us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person is Doris Fosser. Thank you.
I'm Doris Fosson, eighteen twenty West Road, in South Chino Valley, Arizona. I concur with everything Rhonda said. She summed it up pretty well. We've got those same discussions, especially with the wells and the wells in southern area of Chino going dry, and we don't need any more of that.
Thank you. Kara Hammer.
Hi there, good evening. That's my alias. My name's Kara Hammer. I live off Cotton Tail Road in Chino Valley, Arizona. Wasn't really anticipating to talk tonight, but there's so many different points to hit. First off, you mentioned staff a lot in the who recommends. I don't know who the staff is, but maybe they're not the people that bought those homes that overlook the beautiful fields with the pronghorn. You know how you talk about oceanfront property in Arizona? Well, that's it. Those beautiful pronghorns, big grass fields. People buy those properties so that they have those views. To live there and then have a change and have solar farms kinda sucks. And for someone to say that it's not gonna affect the property value, okay, let's maybe not say it doesn't affect it. But let's say you have one house that looks one way on a property with pronghorn and open fields where they purchased, and then another property with all the solar farms, which one's gonna sell first? Which one's gonna sell for more money, right? That's part of the beauty of Arizona and Chino is the views, the pronghorns, the big open fields. So if you're going to go forward, be respectful and allow people their views and maybe hide the solar panels behind one of our beautiful rolling hills, you know? Give people that honor. And I I concur with everyone else. I didn't know, again, I was gonna talk tonight, but I was just thinking of the views and why people move here, and that's definitely one of the reasons I moved here. So thank you, everybody, for listening to everyone tonight.
Thank you. It says be wills to the best I can make out.
That's me. I'm Bev Wilson, and I live at, where do I live? Road two north here in Chino Valley. I love it here. I've seen you before. Hi. It's rural, and I agree with the lady who just spoke. We moved here for the beauty of it. If we put those solar farms in there, it changes everything. I'm not sure. I'm not up on this, and I hadn't planned on speaking either, but has there been an environmental study done on what this is going to affect, actually affect? I agree with the first lady. She was very well-prepared. I respect that. Anyway, I am adamantly opposed to this because I do believe it will affect our lifestyle here and the value of the lives that we live. I think there are other ways to have solar power that doesn't have to destroy the community. The views, the animals, the water, doesn't have to jeopardize it. And even if we make three million dollars a year in the community, is that worth it? Three million dollars in today's society is nothing. We can make it another way. Thank you.
Thank you. Stacy Wagner. Let her step up, and then we'll go forward.
My name is Stacy Wagner. I live in Mingus Meadows, which is part of unincorporated Yavapai County, and I agree with everyone that has spoken. We lived in Prescott up on the mountain. We could see everything, and we moved out to Prescott Valley for the wide-open land and the wide-open spaces, and this project is supposed to be right next to our property with the power lines going right behind our property, so that will ruin our dream of having this beautiful place. And another thing I wanna say is my husband and I drove to California a couple months ago and back, and I noticed that all of their solar farms are out in the middle of nowhere, not by properties, not by residential areas, and even their windmills are not by residential properties or anything. So if you get approached, I would like you to consider all of those facts when it comes to solar farms. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Gary.
I'd like to make a point of clarification. We are looking at an ordinance that we're that we will make a recommendation to the town council on. We are not looking at any project, and to my knowledge, there are no projects that have applied at this town. Is that correct? So there are no projects for solar power at this time?
Folks? Thank you.
And a second point I would like to make, everyone has said how much they like the views. I'm sorry, but your views stop at your property line. If you wanna continue that view, then you better buy the land. And if you don't like that, I'm sorry, but that's the reality of life.
Thank you. So the next person is Richard Huck.
Hi, my name is Richard Huck. I live in unincorporated Yavapai. Excellent point about what we're talking about here. What I'm after here is setbacks. Yavapai County went for a mile from a residential house. They've got their Yavapai County is larger than four individual states, so you guys don't have the scale that they have to be able to say that. But yet, the intent should be there to try to keep this stuff away from the residents. But yet the intent should be there to try to keep this stuff away from the residents. Everyone who spoke so far was absolutely correct in that they want to look over that beautiful view and not see solar panels. Quarter mile is not far enough. Please consider half mile at a minimum. If they if you need a waiver because that half mile ruins a project, then let's do that at the waiver state. Let's not do that at the ordinance state. Half mile, three quarter, Yavapai said a mile. I like that a lot. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anne Yoshinaga. How'd I do?
Good evening. Anne Yoshinaga, Mingus Meadows, unincorporated. Yavapai County. So my issues have a few. I don't know if you just saw in the news that La Paz County just approved a thirty five hundred acre solar farm. But it's far away from any residence. It's against it looks like it from I could tell from Google Maps, like it by the ten freeway. So. When the best catch is on fire, then they're gonna shut down the ten for a couple of days, couple of weeks. Who cares? Who knows? If you looked at the review of the analysis of the P R A best fire. It brings up some very concerning issues that I think need to be considered when looking at an ordinance. To protect the community, the our personnel and the citizens. The general plan does not really doesn't specify utility scale solar farms. It talks about micro grids and. Solar. Whatever you want to call it, that support the community, not states, not looking at regional states, but regional area. So I think we really need to look at that. Kind of on a side note, I would if you ever saw Landman with Taylor Sheridan, just came out. I just happened to watch it this past weekend. It's interesting because the first five minutes of that kind of gave me a preview of what's going on here. Except instead of oil fields, we're talking about solar farms and huge enterprises. Unfortunately, this has may have to do with foreign entities capturing. All this money, millions, if not billions of dollars at the expense of the community. And I think we really need to look at that. People moved here. We need to listen to the community, not so much big business. Big business does not live here. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken Chan. Which I probably got your first name wrong.
Ken Chan, unincorporated Yavapai County. I'm gonna start by pointing out something from your general plan, okay? We are committed to preserving our community's expansive vistas. Endless grasslands and starry nights while supporting limited unsustainable growth. Maybe they should have changed that to say unlimited solar panels and expansive vistas of class. Well, we keep hearing that Yavapai County or Chino Valley is promoting the health, safety, convenience and welfare of the town of Chino. There's nothing in the draft at all. And there's not been any mention anywhere about the dust that's produced during construction. We brought up the issue of water before. Guess what? What does industry always tell you? Oh, we don't use water to clean these panels. Oh, this water goes back right into the dirt. It's not a big deal and there's no contaminations. Let me tell you what it does do. We've already found and CDC and NIH have already come out and said, dust is an issue. Valley fever is an issue. Look up the studies. It's there, folks. Did they look at it? Have they actually looked at any of the negatives or did we just talk to solar industry? Guess what? There was a solar farm that was only a thousand acres, not thirty eight hundred, a thousand acres. They used twenty million gallons of water in two months. That's ten million gallons per month. For a thousand acres to keep the dust abatement down. And that was after they were fined three million dollars for keeping not preventing the dust. Okay, so we keep talking about. Where applicants are going to be required to submit a usage plan or whatever else. Well, let's look at what they're gonna be submitting. Look right at Prop Prospect fourteen, the paperwork you got tonight. They actually refer to an or a report from their expert, Ryberg Power. Well, who's Ryberg Power? Look at their own webpage. They do design and consulting specializing in power and soul P V solar engineering. Design interconnections and land development consulting consulting. Well, we talked about Darren Coffey, who says that there's no impact to property value. What size projects did Darren look at? When you look at any of this research that they've done, they've done research on projects of several hundred acres, not thirty eight hundred acres. Erisia, let me give you a quote directly out of their information, which is public knowledge and is available publicly. They were they look at the reliability and economics. Oh, let's go back to the Ryberg Power, Ryberg Report. It says right here in their own report for them to operate profitably. So when we look at what these experts are telling us, why are we allowing only experts who are pro industry? How about we look at the expert to tell us what's real? How about we look at the expert to tell us people in this area are gonna get sick. Thank you.
Laura Chan.
Hello, thank you for your time to speak. My name is Laura Chan. I live in unincorporated Yavapai County. And but I'm a lover of Chino and Yavapai County and why we all live here. I would like to say, I never thought I would say this because I'm not anti solar, but. I believe this ordinance need to sit needs to say no utility scale solar, solar in Chino Valley. And we need to grandfather in the existing solar facility with no expansion. The reason I say this is when we talk about that nine point five percent of grassland. That's on top of. Everything that we already have. That's our city. If we love our, I'm not even I don't even care about a view. I care about our way of life. If that can't be, then this ordinance must be specific. It it must provide requirements. An example is, I'm getting out of time. Example, I want to put a shed on my house. It needs to be so far. Well, I know that I get a waiver. But in this solar, this solar ordinance, I want. What is it fifty feet, two hundred feet? I can't even remember what it is. But all right, they can do that. Fifty feet, quarter mile off a property. Well, how do you then go back and say, I'm sorry, it's not appropriate for this area? It needs to be a mile and grant a waiver. Things matter. When you expect a proposal, I build a proposal. Based on what away, you know, how what I can get away with. It's economics. It's money. It's the bottom dollar. And so that's where I'm like, I'm really confused with this ordinance. Chino. We don't need to be, our valley doesn't need to be solar fields. NIMBY. Oh, sorry, NIMBY, not in my backyard, but when I was going around and asking questions. When you ask someone. Do you want large scale solar? They'll say yes. And then when you turn around and you ask. But okay, do you want it in your backyard? You know what their first response is? No, or they're silent. Let's keep Chino Valley. Chino Valley and Yavapai County, Yavapai County. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Did much better this time. John Gillespie.
Excuse me, Chair.
Yes.
I have one last late one. Did you want to take this?
All right, let's let that guy go because last time I kicked him out of here.
I'll take her time as well, Chair, if you want, if you'll give it to me. No, I get Chair, Chair, Mayor, Members of Commissioners, my name is John Gillespie. I'm the land use attorney with the Rose Law Group, seven one four four East Stetson. Our firm works on energy projects throughout the state and these projects certainly provide a general benefit to Arizona. But they can also provide a direct benefit to local municipalities where they're developed. Some of these solar developers are among the largest companies in the entire world. And they no doubt can do a lot of good for this town. We found that utility scale solar development can yield great benefits to communities, including construction job creation, economic boost to local businesses. Significant increases in tax revenue and investment in local public services. It also yields a land use which doesn't create noise, has minimal impact on water uses, doesn't create traffic or increased population. And ultimately is dis decommissioned in a way that allows the community to utilize that land differently in thirty to forty years when the land needs have evolved. Compliments the staff and the commission for preparing an ordinance which is comprehensive as comprehensive as any other ordinance in the entire state. The reports being required will ensure that potential developments are addressing fire, water, road improvement, wildlife protection, decommissioning, views. And financial resource considerations, among others, which will ensure that each proposed project yields significant information to guide good decision making. I know many people have expressed some concerns about impacts to water, but I suggest that a lot of that is is the result of misunderstanding. First, solar uses, solar uses almost no water and certainly uses less significantly less than farming, residential or commercial uses. Next, solar does not result in the kind of chemical run and chemical runoff. Researchers right here in Arizona have been farming and growing crops right underneath panels. The University of Arizona in Tucson has been one of the world leaders in doing this testing and research. And they have found that there are no soil contamination issues from solar and that there are actually numerous benefits of growing food, food that can be eaten right underneath the panels. I know my time is is limited here, but I think this is the kind of thing that the town can make developers demonstrate when they consider each individual project. And if the developer cannot make the town comfortable at that time, then you cannot approve that proposed project. If we were drafting this ordinance based on our experience in other jurisdictions. Then we would likely have proposed some differences in standards such as lowering setback requirements and different project separation standards. But what is being proposed does appear to align with the town's general plan and will at least provide the opportunity for projects to be proposed. The town should have all the tools at its disposal to reject specific projects that it doesn't feel provide a community benefit. And accept projects that do provide enough benefit. Ultimately, having this ordinance in places as presented will ensure that the town. Can reject proposals that don't meet the community needs and that it accepts only the best projects that will show a significant benefit to the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you mind handing me that lady's card? Thank you. Hand it to that lady right there and right now at what time is it exactly? Not by that clock. As of six forty three, that's the end of taking any cards. Thank you. You're welcome. Were you already in here? The answer is yes, and the next person that walks in the door, the answer is no. Please take your card up and give it to that lady right there. Cindy O'Daly.
Hi there. My name's Cindy O'Daly. I live in Coyote Springs, unincorporated Yavapai County. I just want to say I do concur with both Rhonda and Mr. Ken. They had some great talking points. Our community out there, we're a very big equaling community, so we have a huge concern with, there's many of us that ride out in the state land out there to use that to ride our horses. And water contamination for our horses is a huge concern. And that's we're just like to keep our land, our land. Thank you.
Thank you. Yolanda Moniga. Did I get it? Right.
I'm not a speaker, but just wanted to let you guys know. Been here since the eighty. And I have a.
Excuse me. Do you live in Chino or in the?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you.
Been here since the eighties. I have a filter. On my well that comes, that's connected to, how can I say it? Where you store the water.
Pressure tank.
Yeah. Just recently. It's gray. It's like brown. I was gonna let you guys know, but something's going on with the wells. And it's just now happening. I don't know. And where are my properties located? The water is excellent, like two fifty, but I'm concerned. And I was a part of the adjudication for the water. And I'm not on the adjudication anymore. But we do have problems with water. So I don't know much about. The reasoning for you guys wanting to do the solar, but I think we do need more information because I just found out last minute. My daughter called me and this. Everything's live right now, what you guys are talking about. And. Don't know much about solar, but I I would like to know more reasoning behind the reason why you you guys want the solar, not just because of money. Or you're getting a grant. Yeah, I understand that our view stops at our property line, but. I like to look out of my property line too. So I heard somebody in here when I was on my way here make a comment about that. Just remember who elects you. I didn't I didn't like that comment either, so. But yeah, something's going on with the water. Y'all need to find out. Another thing too, we got a lot of potholes. In Chino. I would like to know what's going on with that before the solar comes in. But. Yeah, I'd just like to know more about it. Not it it does the town want to put it in for the pot farms, the weed farms? What's the reasoning behind it? I don't know much about it. Tonight's the first night I heard about it, so. But we do have a water problem. And we ain't got no rain this year, y'all, so. I worry about the fires that are coming. California's burning up right now. It's not even on any of our news channels here in Arizona, but my mother called me, the Palisades. I'm talking millions of dollars of homes. So I think we need to put our priorities in order. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, and I watched The Landman. That's a good, a good movie. And and you know what they were talking about? They're talking about gas and solar. And then windmills in California, they were talking about. How expensive that is, the concrete, what to put in, gas is cheaper.
Please step down. All right, so I'm gonna take a minute here and kind of step out of the way things normally work to clarify a couple of things. First of all, there isn't one person sitting up here that got elected. We don't get paid. We volunteered to serve the community to the best of our efforts and generally we do a pretty damn good job. Second thing is, we're not here to approve, bring in, desire, kick out, or do any other thing with solar. We're here to look at an ordinance which will help us take care of problems and. Other things that may come if solar does come to this community. I heard some snickering in the audience a little bit when it was earlier about no specific solar projects having been brought to the town. That is correct. That does not mean that the solar folks have not been politicking to get an ordinance written in this town. Not for a specific project, but so that things like that could happen in the future. I keep hearing things about backdoor deals and experts from the solar industry giving advice to the town. And issues like that. and issues like that. I find that to be uninformed information. There isn't anybody giving anything to the town that the town hasn't got out and sought out for their expertise, not for their position in some solar business. If you were going to hire a lawyer, you would certainly go find the best lawyer that you could, no matter who that lawyer worked for, to get the best advice. And that is what the town staff, who is the people who work for the town, have done to their very best of their abilities. And this ordinance has got the county ordinance beat hands down for many respects. So, I want to be very clear here that I'm not seeking election for anything, and the poor folks that do go to the town council, my hats are to them for their courage and their desire to serve the community. Alright. Next person is Brian Lantiro.
Thanks for pronouncing my name so well. That's fantastic. Uh, Brian Lantiro and I live in Mingus Meadows, uh, unincorporated, um, Yawapai County. And I'm really, I'm not gonna dive into, you know, detailed numbers and facts, because we just don't have enough time, so. Uh, I'm a CPA by trade, so I'm just trying to give, first of all, I know this council's not here or this zoning commission is not here to decide whether or not you do utility scale solar projects, but let's just think about solar in general at utility size, scale. Do they make money? No, they don't make money. So how's this whole business, you think about it, if they made money, we'd have a lot more than one percent of all of our uh energy uh from solar and renewables, et cetera. But they get large tax breaks and it's all, without going into a lot of detail, it's a very much of a balance sheet trick. We're getting big liability, we're gonna pay a couple million a year to the town, but on the other hand, we're gonna have this big tax credit that we're getting from the state, from the feds, and this grant. So we're gonna pay off that liability with this credit. But just to get to the the ordinance itself, I'm a big believer that, you read the general plan, this is not what they had in mind, and I believe the ordinance should be amended and adjusted for the kind of solar uh power that the plans uh describes, which is the way that uh Ian mentioned earlier. Microgrids, no microgrids, which would in an emergency supply energy for the town of Chino Valley. And I did just want to bring up one point about the impact to the value of the properties. And I want to point the staff to the uh study that was done called the Primary Source of Chronicle Methodology Regarding Damage Studies, uh Third Addicto of Real Estate Damages, published by Randall Bell, Ph.D. And just to give you a quick uh idea, the results of this study, uh which I can provide, show between a negative eight to a negative thirty percent decline in value of real estate adjacent or near solar energy generation power systems. And if you still don't believe that property values are impacted negatively, uh, look at some of these uh plants that are out there right now. Lighthouse BP has something called the Neighbor Agreement, where they will pay neighboring properties uh anywhere from thirty to sixty thousand dollars to go along with the plan or something similar, uh to be a good neighbor and say that they're in uh they're in agreement with the plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Ran me out of note page. Alright. Next person up is James LaStrange.
Good evening, everyone, and uh James LaStrange from Light Source BP on behalf of Draconis Energy Project. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is James LaStrange and I'm a developer at Light Source BP, where we build and operate solar projects throughout the United States. Our mission is to develop projects designed with the community in mind, contributing to energy independence while aligning with local values and priorities. At Light Source BP, we respect Chino Valley's local land use authority and greatly appreciate the thoughtful effort that went into drafting this ordinance. We believe establishing clear, community-centered guidelines is crucial to fostering responsible growth. We are evaluating bringing a solar energy project to Chino Valley, and it would bring significant benefits to Chino Valley. During construction, it would create four hundred and fifty to five hundred jobs, offering substantial economic opportunities for local workers and businesses. Over the long term, the project is expected to generate tens of millions of dollars in new property tax revenue, which will directly support the Chino Valley School District, public services, and infrastructure, without increasing taxes for existing residents. Additionally, with an annual operations budget of several million dollars largely spent within the region, the project will provide sustained support for the local economy. We'd also like to address some of the concerns that have been expressed regarding utility scale solar. One, water contamination. Light Source BB, Light Source BP requires all its solar panels to pass strict testing protocols established by the EPA to ensure they are not hazardous to people or the environment. Light Source BP does not buy panels from any manufacturers whose panels have not passed this rigorous testing process. Protecting wildlife. Environmental stewardship is a top priority. Our team conducts thorough studies to minimize impacts and works with experts to implement protective measures for local wildlife and habitats. Proximity to homes. We carefully design projects with appropriate setbacks, screening, and buffering to ensure harmony with surrounding neighborhoods and maintaining the area's rural character. At Light Source BP, we take pride in developing projects that not only deliver clean, reliable energy, but also enhance the communities where we work. We're committed to collaborating with Chino Valley and regional partners to ensure this project respects local values, drives economic growth, and supports energy independence. In closing, we feel that solar development is one of the best uses of the available land for several reasons, to include quiet for neighbors, improved power grid reliability, minimal water use, designated migration corridors, especially for big games such as pronghorn, little to no strain on town infrastructure, and the added benefits to the school district and other public services. Thank you again for your time, and we look forward to continuing our work with the community.
Thank you. That's all of the cards we have. So I'm going to close the public portion of this meeting. I would like to congratulate the audience for their proper behavior. Thank you very much. Okay, so we have some questions for staff based on some notes and other things that the commission
Alright, where would you like to start?
So, we hear a lot about setbacks and views and environmental studies, uh fire danger. I'll start with those because there's more.
Sure. So setbacks, um, we do obviously have some proposed within the ordinance that is part of um number three here that we did want to have discussion with the commission about. Didn't hear a lot of talk on the best, but I know that's on their um current. For the best setbacks from a developed residential property, it is a mile or central to the project itself, whichever is larger. As far as panels themselves, they are a quarter mile from developed residential property, which is a one thousand three hundred and twenty feet from the property line of a residence. It is fifty feet from undeveloped uh residential land. One of the things, um, it's kind of a a one eighty that we've experienced tonight, well, at least from two people. We've been hearing no waivers, no waivers, no waivers, or two tonight saying we should look at waivers, go higher on setbacks, and then implement a waiver for um potential reductions to that if the project is good. Um, kind of a one eighty from the approach that we've been going, so if, I don't know if we want to kind of dialogue that on setback specific, if we're um kind of there. Not really sure. Just been anti-waver the whole time, so.
Most of what I've heard, and hopefully if I'm wrong, people will correct me up here on the commission, everybody seems to want bigger setbacks.
Correct.
So, uh, maybe we might entertain some discussion about-
Sure. I want to start with panels, so right now, I mean, our our current, what we had is a quarter mile from developed land property line to um fifty feet from undeveloped county, I believe is a mile. We have other communities within Arizona that are smaller. I've heard a couple um mumblings of trying to get that to at least county level, get a mile setback, um, and then utilize that waiver if there's a a solid project for some reason.
Now, when when you say that, is that a mile from on all sides of the property, no matter what the property is on the, um, around the project?
I'd have to confirm if they do that, but um as far as the the mile setback, I believe that is the case. It's from i- in from the project, not just from residential.
Okay, so, as I did hear something about a place in either Virginia or West Virginia, but their standard setback is over two thousand feet, so.
Okay. So I guess that would be the flavor or whatever um the commission would like if you want to-
So do we have any comments from the commission on that? Go ahead.
On to the proximity of solar fields to residential areas. It says the current is quarter mile setback from the Peavine Trail and developed residential from the project area, so that's the actual panel or their perimeter fencing or from the-
Um, based on the definition that we had, we had that definition, let's go through. The project area, I believe, is property line itself, so it would be setback from property line to property line.
So if somebody's got ten thousand acres and they want to put ten thou- it would be from the property line of that whole parcel?
Be the property line from the, so if you're you're going from residential, let's just say it's it's a quarter mile. So you have a residence, property line, quarter mile toward, I, okay, I understand what you're saying, so it would be a quarter mile to the first foundation point of the equipment. You are correct.
Okay.
Yes.
For what they're building, not from the actual property of the parcel that they're going to put it on.
Could you explain why you did it that way?
Uh, it was just a- after dialogue on it, um, I don't really think there was a rhyme or reason, it just was what we settled on. If you wanted to go to property line or however you want to shape that, we can. I don't believe there was a specific intent, it just made sense at the time.
Because some, well, some projects could have a lot more property than they actually have project.
Correct.
So that could be something to think on there. Anybody else have any thoughts?
So basically, all this is going to affect is ranchers. There is, are there any property owners that have large enough, that have large enough facility, parcels that this is going to affect?
So you're asking who could actually support a utility scale solar project on their property?
Because if they're wanting to do like thirty-eight thousand acres or whatever, I mean, that's not going to fit in town, it's going to be on the far east side where all the ranch land is at, correct?
Correct, yes.
Will that be the only place or maybe up by Del Rio Springs?
So within the ordinance itself, um, the location, I believe, is every, you know, the land only available for solar development in Chino Valley would be east of Perkins, or sorry, excuse me, east of the Peavine.
Don't we have a a map that shows the the area that with the solar project would be allowed in a PowerPoint?
It's from the Peavine east.
To the town limits.
Yep.
And how about north and south?
It would just be to the east of Peav- so it would be the north boundary of Chino, the south boundary of Chino, Peavine to the east.
So basically from Coyote Springs to Del Rio Springs.
Yeah, we we probably would like to look at that.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
Um, I get the feeling that people don't realize that this land is owned by people, not us. We don't own the land. We, it's so, the community owns the land that these solar farms are being proposed to be built on. I'm with you a hundred percent on what you're saying, but I I get the feeling that um maybe you think that we, as a town of Chino, on the land, developed this to put it on, so yeah, we're not, so. Yeah, so you have to do that. Uh, the reason why I do so, talking clear, the reason why I see that this be- being done is because if they propose to do, to build this, what do we have to say, hey, you gotta follow these guidelines? If we have nothing in place, what can we base it off of? I would say, I would say, forget it, no, out. That's it. But that's, that's, to me, that's always do, yes, but can we do that with the ordinance? We want to, I I don't know, because it kind of both if I think about it. Um, ordinance, yeah, if you say yes, we have an ordinance that welcomes them to come and do it. Okay, and I don't, I felt that the way we did the ordinance was to prevent that, because I do not, I agree, I'm with you on that, so. I just wanted to clear, it sounded like it, people um thought that maybe we own the land that we would say, hey, we want to build it. Okay.
So, understanding that, but then realize that the people that do own that property have the same property rights that you do to do with your property what you choose to do with it as well. So Will, can you, is that black line basically the the west border?
So if you kind of follow the, it it's not going to be one hundred percent on, but essentially east of that and then anything shaded in here, that's Chino Incorporated. Um, that would be the only available land within town limits that have the opportunity to do this under current language, proposed language, excuse me.
Excuse me? Well, according, uh, we'll have to, to answer that question, probably can't get done at this meeting, um, but we could find out for you, and if you would go to town staff in a week or so, they'll have that information for you. There's the limits to what we can do up here, folks, so bear with us. Okay, so Will, there's been so lots of discussion about property values. I know that you or me or anybody else really in this room can't say one way or the other what the property value impact is gonna be. It's, people move here for the wide open spaces, and unfortunately, they don't own those wide open spaces, so the people that do own it sometimes decide to do things with the wide open spaces. And that's just a fact of life, especially in Chino, because there's a lot of big open space, but it's owned by somebody. It's not state land or government land or Indian land. It's private land. So, um, there's been a lot of talk about water usage uh for dust control, which is a short-term water usage, because after the site's built, more than likely there won't be that much dust control necessary. And then in the project development part of this, hard surface roads should be made part of that.
That is correct.
Okay, um, water contamination. We'll save that for the solar folks. There was some interesting commentary on solar projects really don't make money, that they're used for tax credits and for sale between large entities to benefit each other for other places in their economic profile. That's an interesting thing to think about. I do know that there's been studies done on what are the most viable producers of electricity and solar and windmills are at the the opposite end from other sources because of their infrastructure things and the weather, and that that's why the batteries have become so important to the solar industry. Okay, so, let's see, what else we got here? Let's see, what else we got here? So we talked about setbacks, we haven't come to a decision yet. Um there's been some talk about the general plan, where the general plan only supports local uh grid business and not commercial electrical production that goes outside of the set town limits of Chino Valley, as we're well aware, these kind of projects just go into the electric grid, they don't stay here. Let's see. Um CAFMA. There was a statement said as CAFMA, they haven't been notified of this project or not projects, but this ordinance and possible projects in the future. Have you guys been in discussion with CAFMA?
So we had dialogue back when Chief Fragtag was there, um a lot of the dialogue revolved around um making sure we had project specifics. Because there were a lot of unknowns on whether the scale, what kind of best, what what sort of um systems were in place. There wasn't a lot of firm commitment that we can make just through the ordinance itself. That's why we have it left open as CAFMA needs to approve it in order for there to be even a project considered.
Okay, so they are the only fire authority in this area, though, am I correct?
Correct, and it's part of the ordinance or the um proposed language. Um they have to annex into CAFMA's fire district, they cannot be without a fire district. Cause a lot of the land out in the east is not um in a fire district at all.
Correct. So, but in your discussions with CAFMA, they um didn't say, no, we don't want a dang thing to do with it. They looked at it as when you come to us with a project, then we can start talking about what we can do to provide fire protection.
It wasn't a surefire way, you know, it was like, yes, we can do it, no, we can't do it, is we need to look at the project.
Okay. Oh, another good one, transfer of responsibility from the person who builds the project to the eventual end user purchasing the project.
That, correct, we have that worked in um as part of approval, if any of them get that far. They have to um agree to a development agreement with the town, which solidifies all of what we are um discussing within this ordinance. And part of that um includes that they have to adhere, the the future property owner, if they ever choose to sell it, they have to adhere to it. We've discussed provisions in the event of a developer selling to APS. Um which we've had obviously in the past to with our existing facility, that um if that is an option that they are going to exercise. They need to ensure that um, cause APS isn't necessarily guaranteed to pay that community benefit or whatnot. The the seller must essentially make the town whole for the entire lifespan. So if it, their commitment is a million dollars a year over the course of thirty years, in order to sell that, they have to agree as part of their development agreement that they would essentially put up their full community benefit before they transfer ownership to an entity like APS.
So that's based on the assumption that it's only gonna be good for thirty years, though.
Correct.
Maybe we should offer some wordage that if the place produces one volt of electricity, it's still in commission and they should be paying on it. Regardless of whether it's thirty years or ten years. Until the date that it's completely decommissioned and cleaned up and gone, they need to pay that benefit. Yes, ma'am.
And this was still supposed to, if they have a project, they're supposed to open an escrow account for cleanup or decommission? So that money is already prepaid?
They'll either have an escrow account or they'll have some either line of credit or bonding or cash, whatever that looks like. Correct.
And that's something similar to any subdivision development, they have to provide a bond or some form of surety.
Correct.
To provide payment, if they default, go bankrupt or just disappear.
Yeah, the town would have the, or we wanna make sure that we have the ability to exercise that bond or whatever, so we can clean it up, fix it, what whatever that looks like, whether it's a subdivision or.
Okay, and so to clarify why we're putting it on the person who builds it and not the person who buys it. Because if APS purchases it, because of the agreement that the town has with APS, they don't have to do that. Am I correct in saying that? All right. Ma'am, you already spoke and I can't let you speak again, I'm sorry. So, okay. Can you speak to the general plan and the local grid business?
So I know Lori discussed that with um when Commissioner Switzer was here during the November fifth meeting. Um I don't know if you wanna recap what you.
I just didn't, I don't have that in front of me.
Oh. Can we put a pen in that, just come back to that, if there's another question in the meantime?
Go ahead, Gary. I I have a couple of comments. One of the gentlemen that uh spoke for three minutes mentioned uh one of the benefits of this project, if there was a project, would be um property tax. And Chino Valley does not have a property tax, correct?
That is correct.
So that would not be a benefit. And I and I know that most municipalities do have property taxes, so uh that's just a clarification on that. One presentation we had. And as this ordinance is written, we're looking at three thousand eight hundred acres maximum.
That is correct.
And if this ordinance, if we recommend it that it go forward to the town council and the town council approved it. And those are two ifs. If sometime in the future, the acreage wanted to be increased or decreased. That would be what, just a line item that would come through here as to amending the existing ordinance?
Come through the same process that this ordinance currently is going through.
But it would just be one line item, basically. And then in the proposed ordinance on the battery storage system, you say centrally located in the solar project area or maintain a minimum separation of one mile from developed residential property, whichever is greater. Well, a mile, if it's in the center and a mile from property, you're looking at an area that is two miles by two miles. Which would be, if my math is correct, it would be uh two thousand five hundred sixty acres.
I'll trust your math.
Well, six hundred forty acres per square mile.
Per square mile, right.
So basically, we would have one project like that, because we only have thirty eight hundred acres that we're working with. So if there was a project that came in like that, that would work. So we would probably end up looking at these uh storage systems, they gotta be centrally located regardless.
More than likely, the idea behind centrally locating them or a mile is that the the most impact, you know, i- if it was, God forbid, to catch fire. That it its impact i- is as minimal as possible based on the location, as as it's contained as much as possible to that project.
Yeah, the 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 whole hazard is when the batteries melt and the water hits, and then you've got contaminated water that might go into the uh groundwater. And then lastly, and I know it's kinda late to recommend this, but um you're saying quarter of a mile from developed residential, and then you had mentioned fifty feet from undeveloped residential. And I haven't seen where it said undeveloped residential in the in this proposed ordinance. But I'm thinking we might just wanna say any residential property rather than differentiate in between developed and undeveloped. Because if you go with an, if you go with the fifty feet from undeveloped and this project goes in, well, then that has an impact on that residential property.
Actually, any property, whether it's residential or not, because the the setbacks should be around the whole project, not just because of some adjacent property, unless the property is developed.
So a lot of the from developed versus undeveloped um came from the existing zoning of land out in this area. Oh, maybe it'll work. A large chunk of the land out here, um be it the Perkins Ranch, um some of the EcoDev land. It it's zone single family um residential two acre minimum, which would be considered undeveloped residential land. Um so a lot of that, that's where that came from, is that, okay, there's a lot of vacant land that's being used as grazing land. Um even though it's considered zoned SR two, that there would not be an impact to that because there's no direct residence on there.
But we should, we should plan for that eventuality.
Okay, absolutely.
Because someday it may actually have houses on it. And then that person that owns that property has lost a certain amount of his property to meet the setback requirement based on being against developed residential land.
I see what you mean, a retroactive, if there's a panel there, their house has to be quarter.
Correct, he's lost the ability to develop to his property line, he has to meet a setback that somebody else caused.
Okay.
That makes any sense.
It does, it does.
So we still haven't tackled the distance um issue for setbacks. If it was only solar panels, as far as I'm concerned, a quarter mile would probably be okay. But the the panels and the batteries come as a package. So I would like to maximize that setback within reason to make more room.
So I I've heard tonight, um one person mentioned a minimum of a half mile, a lot of miles. Um I know, so yeah, if a county does a mile, if we wanted to be consistent with county reg, um county regs.
I personally, yeah, the county does what they want and we do what we want. We don't have giant tracts of land to work with as the county does, and that doesn't make them good or bad, it's just a fact. So, but I would like to see more and um anywhere from a half to three quarters of a mile would seem reasonable.
Okay, and you wanna poll the commi, or can we poll the commission on that?
We could do that, if we would like to do that, probably a good idea.
So we are talking setbacks from property line of a project, regardless of what they're adjacent. How far the panels have to be back from property line?
Correct.
Okay.
So we'll start with Commissioner Metters and go this way.
One mile?
One mile.
Vice Chair? Oh, Commissioner Penn?
One mile.
Mr. Welker?
One mile.
Commissioner.
I I would say a half mile, but the majority has already spoken.
So the consensus of the commission is one mile, so we'll change that wordage.
Can I ask if there is um any appetite for consideration of a waiver, since that came up?
So, I have a, I have um concerns about waivers only because there are points of attack against something.
Sure.
So I would probably not wanna see that myself. I think that the folks that have a lot of money and wanna do things like this have ways to circumvent things that we don't even know about. So the less room we give them, the best, better off we are.
So, Mr. Chairman, I just need to clarify, we're looking at E sighting requirements, number two. See, all solar panels and equipment must maintain a minimum separation of one mile from what? We have currently any developed residential property?
We need to say, we need to say um any 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 border, because we don't know what those undeveloped properties are gonna have happen to them. At some point, they may be zoned industrial, they have a slaughterhouse open up next to them or an old folks home, we don't know.
So you're saying that that the one mile buffer is actually on the solar property?
No, to the panels.
From from property line in.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so that's.
What I'm hearing from the folks that spoke tonight is a quarter mile looking at panels is is not what they wanna see. And so more distance and the consensus of the commission is a mile.
Okay.
From the Peavine Trail to our eastern border, how many miles is that?
We might be limiting this thing right out of business, that's something we have to be careful with. I know you guys don't, but we we have a concern because we can be responsible for the town losing all its money fighting a lawsuit.
Anywhere from six to six and a half miles.
How much?
Six to six and a half miles, just average.
So they have room to do something out there?
Sorry, was that, do they have room if we?
No, I've.
Okay.
I just didn't know how far bor- border went out there.
So um Vice Chair Passiak being the great parliamentarian that he is. Um and I also concur, cause I was gonna shoot for either a half or three quarters of a mile. Um we need to find out if we did do a mile, if it's, I mean, if that's even appropriate for us to do that. Cause there are limits to what we can do before we start interfering with other people's business.
Can almost say with certainty the Jerome Junction proposal would be out.
What's, okay, so we'll just anchor on that, just because he seems to be the closest one to have an issue with it. What distance can we stipulate to be?
Quarter mile he was affected.
So the quarter mile was right at it.
Correct.
And if we go to a half, then we've interrupted his ability. And he's the one that had the solar panel only project approved many years ago that has since now expired and
Correct.
found to be wanting for a purpose.
And where's the Buddhist temple, that's considered residential, isn't it?
It's out in the county.
Is that in the county?
It's out over here.
Okay.
Say that again?
I said, so increasing the separation distance isn't viable.
Correct.
Uh okay, so what what you're telling us, Will, is that increasing this minimum separation from a quarter mile isn't really viable for us to do that?
From the Peavine Trail only, that's what this says. Must be at least one quarter mile to the east of the Peavine Trail.
And develop residential.
So what the the poll that was just done was a for regardless of the solar project from property line of wherever, whatever land they have. Their panels must be a minimum of a mile from that property line, it doesn't matter what's adjacent to it. So if they have, if you.
I don't think we can make that happen, I mean, it's nice to talk about it, but. So backing up about three steps, one of the reasons that that quarter mile was chosen seems to me like in discussion. That was really the viable distance that we could get away with without going to court immediately, am I correct on that?
I'd say that was a fair opinion. Um that's where a lot of these separation between projects came in to ensure, you know, that, you know, their minimum were viable, but there were viability.
So regardless of what we say here, the town council probably is not gonna go for that because it puts them in a bad position of legality.
You're welcome.
We're welcome to try, huh?
Or or um make a recommendation that council consider that, I I mean, you can, you can do a boss toss. Toss it to them and let them fight it out.
Okay, so item three, we got fifty foot setback small property lines, that's been amended, correct?
Correct, we're correct, we're talking a mile.
Because we have to be a, okay.
So essentially, it would be changing to A, number three, and then just deleting C, is that correct, Lori?
Say that again?
So, the, what the proposal would be under two A, Roman numeral three, have a fifty foot setback from all property lines, change that to one mile, and then the separation between residential, so two C is no longer applicable. So, that would be deleting that and then just changing to A, number three, from fifty feet to a mile.
Okay, so I think probably there's, there's been a miss, misspoking here on the fifty foot setback from all property lines cuz the fifty foot would just apply to a commercial property.
So, that would be when they would be adjacent.
And the setback is on your own property.
Right.
They have to be fifty feet back from the property line to the start of anything they do.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's not a separation between that use and a neighboring use, that's a separation. The buffer is the, or a buffer, this is a setback, the setback is on your own property.
So, okay, so in doing this, and we go to C, a quarter mile from any developed residential property, but if we just change that to, to developed or undeveloped property, what does that do to us? Cuz I'm getting a little bit confused.
So, I, I, I think, I understand where you're, Lori, the, the quarter mile, if we go all the way back before the talk of the mile change, the quarter mile was not a setback, it was a separation. So, there had to be a minimum distance between.
So, we're so what you're, what this is saying to clarify, cuz I'm being thick-headed, I admit it. Um, what this is saying is minimum separation of a quarter of a mile from any developed residential property for equipment.
Correct.
Not the fifty foot setback from all property lines.
Kinda like a caveat, so if you have, you know, you're next to not a developed residential piece of property, you have a fifty foot setback from your property line as a solar developer. If you're adjacent next to a home, you have, your, your fat fifty foot is exceeded, you, you have to ensure that you're at least a thirteen, you know, twenty away from a residential property before you can put a solar panel down.
Okay, so going back to my other thought was, if we put the fifty foot setback on developed property, aren't we putting something on the person who has the undeveloped property?
Okay, I would say that's, you know, you get into the attorney land, but I would, I believe that makes sense, that you, it is.
Cuz anybody's got SR two out there.
Correct.
They can't build building on their property, they have to setback then, they have to make.
They would have to maintain the thirteen hundred foot, so they've lost a quarter mile of their usable land through no fault of their own. I mean, that's the way I'm looking at it.
And that's with current writing, if the mile setback holds, there would be no benefit to.
Mile setback's gonna survive, it just isn't viable to do it that way.
So, the idea is that what you're doing is you're looking at what's out there now, you're protecting the people that have already invested. Once this is built, if it's built, then anybody that comes in to develop, they are gonna look at that and go, whoa. Are we really gonna put houses that close to this? So, they're making a choice, as opposed to people that already exist, who've already made their choice, and we're trying to give them that benefit of that separation. So, basically, it's giving all those ranchers out the choice, either you put in solar panels or you sell it to a developer, you get their choice, one or the other.
I don't know, I mean, I don't know, I, to me, if I was an owner of that ranch land and I lost a quarter mile of my property for something that I didn't have anything to do with or make any money off of, I, I would not be happy about that.
I, I have a question, and, and I, I think we've gotten to the point where we can't, or not can't, but the one hundred, the one mile separation isn't, isn't viable. So, I think we should leave it at a quarter mile, and then my question is, is that right now, if for some reason, let's say we recommend this, go forward to the council, and the council then approves it, and then a project at some date comes in, we know that the solar panels and equipment have to maintain a minimum separation of a quarter mile from any developed residential property. Now, after that solar project is in, can the adjacent property that might be zoned residential to A be built and be within that quarter mile?
We can certainly write that.
Because then the person that buys that land says, okay, I don't mind living next to a solar farm. And he still, and he still, he still has his, all of his property rights, all of his bundle, that's like, uh, that's like the log cabin.
Correct.
It was there before the school got there.
Mm-hmm.
And the log cabin can stay there forever as long as they don't lose their license.
You are correct.
So, I, I guess that's what I'm saying, is that, you know, we, we could work it that way, that so what a future person coming in could, if they wanted to, put a house right next to the solar farm, just like Luke Air Force Base has a bunch of houses right next to it, because people don't wanna drive twenty miles to go to work.
So, as long as we put that on the, a provision so that that property owner has that decision to be able to be made, because really, the biggest danger, in my opinion, to the solar farm is the batteries. Panels themselves are basically inert, they don't, I don't believe they pollute a whole bunch. But the batteries are a significant issue. So, maybe we could change the wordage from.
But we do have a mile for the battery storage.
Pardon?
We do require.
It's placed in the center, okay, so that makes sense. All right, then that's, that shows wisdom there. Okay, so.
We could write.
We need to put something in there to protect undeveloped property, that they have the right to build within fifty feet of that, that solar property's boundary, if they choose to do so. And the setback of being thirteen hundred and twenty feet is applicable now to the current things that exist. And in the future, if that person decides he wants to build houses within fifty feet of the property line of a solar farm, then that would be his choice, and we haven't taken a right away from him because right now, he's not doing, he's not, he's not doing that now with that property, not that he might change.
And that's how that works with land use. Whatever comes in first has the priority on this.
Okay, so we can make an amendment to this wordage to state that that person has that ability?
Actually, that's, uh, that is a, an accepted practice in land use.
What, okay, what's the accepted practice?
Well, just like with the log cabin, the log cabin is there with a liquor license right next to the school, but who was there first? The log cabin with the liquor license, the school knew it when it went in, and they went in there anyways, with that understanding that they have a liquor license across the street from them, which doesn't meet the required separation of new facilities.
So, somebody, so here we're gonna play devil's advocate. So, if the person owns that property, they sell it to somebody, and that person has a, a concerted goal to force the solar project to be out of compliance, they, they could.
The goal with this ordinance is that any project that happens to come in, that meets all the criteria, that is approved, they have to meet this criteria, if somebody comes in later, these guys don't have to change what they.
They're not, the person that's there isn't forced to change what they.
Correct, so they've met the criteria.
That makes sense, cuz they've got the money invested in it.
Correct.
I won't comment on that. So, the consensus is that we can't do much with this because we're putting the town in jeopardy of a lawsuit, am I correct in that wordage? Which I think we're going to be there anyways, but.
So, did you wanna talk about the general plan, are you done with this piece?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, the general plan has a, a series of policies under the goal, which is talking about resiliency and redundant power sources, um, community, regional and community-serving utility systems, that's what's in the goal. Underneath it, there are eight policies, one talks about microgrids, one talks about community or regional scale solar, one talks about community solar. It does identify that we need to look at developing guidelines and regulations. Doesn't mean that we have to approve a project when it comes in. Nothing in this forces us to have solar, what it says is, you need to look at it, and you probably should put some regulations in place. Could be microgrid, could be community scale, could be utility scale, all those are mentioned in this section of the general plan.
The utility scale one is actually mentioned in there?
Yep.
All right.
Which is the same thing as regional scale.
Regional, okay.
When we did the general plan, that, those were the terms we used.
One of the things we need to keep in mind is regional is outside the city limits of Chino Valley. Okay. Is there any more questions for town staff?
Yeah, I have one.
Yes, sir.
Is the town considering changing the noise decibel or the maximum grade percentage?
No, we haven't, I feel that those things are in place for a purpose and they don't need to be changed.
Is there, would you, do you see an issue with what we have proposed?
No, not what we proposed, it's what other people had suggested, raising, raising it.
Understood.
You know, in, in the country where we're at, noise travels a long distance. And so, the noise is really critical to make sure that we don't have, sixty-five decibels is the lo- is the furthest noise contour around an airport where they don't allow you to build houses. So, why would we say that's okay to have that kinda noise level in the countryside, which is gonna impact houses?
Well, I don't, one person suggested that we raise it to sixty-five.
Yeah, we're saying no.
No. Okay, I think we're done. Thank you all. All right, so I'm closing the public portion of the hearing, and I am gonna call for a motion.
Did you want me to do a roll call?
I'll, I'll make the motion. And hopefully, I word it correctly. Mr. Chairman, I recommend that TA two zero two four dash zero four, utility scale solar be forwarded to the town council with a recommendation of approval as presented by staff and as amended at this meeting.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I second it.
We have a motion and a second, is there any more discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Welker?
Yes.
Commissioner Penn?
Yes.
Commissioner Zimudio?
Yes.
Commissioner Metters?
Yes.
Vice Chair Passiak?
Yes.
Chair Merritt?
No. So, the no vote will explain himself, the other ones don't need to. I have no heartburn with the way this thing is written, I think an excellent job done by everybody, and going through this process tonight has proved how much forethought you guys put into this, and I appreciate what you did. But, it's my opinion that the town of Chino Valley now does not have an ordinance that allows this solar project stuff to come in, and I don't believe that we should entertain any way for that to happen. So, that's why I voted no, because I don't believe it belongs here, I think there's a lot of other places that could be done besides this place. So, that's my vote, and the motion passes.
Can you explain our yes votes, why?
Pardon?
Can you explain the yes votes, why, why we say yes?
Uh, you may, if you'd like, we'll go right down this row and do it. Would you like to explain your vote, please?
I personally don't think it needs to be built in Chino, that there's plenty of land between here and California along I ten, but I understand that property owners have a right to request this for their land, and if we deny it, that the town is liable for years' worth of lawsuits for it, so, I voted yes, let the council decide.
I voted yes for as much the same reason, um, it's gonna come, present it to us. I do not want it, heck no, no way, but the people that have, that own the land, that own that land, that wanna bring it in and present it to us, we have to have something to go on to prevent that, or to make it where it's it's just not, it's not wanted, um, and, and also, I wanna protect the town from having to file a big lawsuit and go to court. That's my reason why I say yes on this.
Commissioner Welker?
Pretty much the same stuff.
Commissioner Penn?
I am against the project, but the reality is that these companies have untold sums of money to tie this town up in litigation for a long time. And it's gonna become very costly to the town of Chino Valley.
Commissioner Passiak? Vice Chair Passiak?
Well, I, I voted for this, and right now, the town and staff have absolutely nothing to say what is required for a project to come in, so if a project were to come in and we did not have this ordinance, every point would be negotiated, and as has been said by other commissioners, these companies coming in have more money than the town has, and they will debate it infinitum until they get pretty much what they want. One of the letters that was sent in by the Arizona Solar Energy Industries Association was a two-page letter, and what was it, thirty-six pages of attachments? So, that's just saying they wanna comment on what we're looking at as a proposed ordinance. If we don't have something to say this is what requir- is required to start looking at having solar in Chino Valley, I don't know how much they'll spend on that if we don't have anything to s- to stand on. That's why I voted for it.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to item E, action items, which there are none. Item F, information items, does the staff have anything? Okay, does the commission have any thing they'd like to speak? So, the chairman gets an opportunity to speak. It's my opinion, we're gonna wind up in court with this one way or the other, and I'd rather pick the fight up front, but that's just me. But also, these folks here have as, just as valid opinion of what's gonna happen as I do. And they're totally correct in the fact that the, the big, the big money folks can wear this town out like a bad sock. And, um, sock. You should come look in my drawer. Anyways, um, and the comments that they sent, which we have up here and have read about this ordinance, all the things that the town put in there to protect this town is what they're pushing us to change. So that gives you some idea of how diligent the town staff has been in protecting your interest in this community. Okay, so now, we get to open the public portion of this meeting, where you can come up and speak for three minutes about anything except everything we talked about tonight on the agenda. So if you choose to come up and speak, you'll get three minutes. The same rules apply. If it's on anything we talked about tonight, I'm gonna politely ask you to step down because that's not what this meeting, this portion of the meeting is about. So do you still wanna come up and speak? Okay, please step up to the microphone, state your name, and start the clock.
My name is Yolanda. I have two successful businesses in Prescott Valley. I give back to my community. I just went through APS trying to put a big telephone pole right in the front of my sign. Did I fight them? I did. Did I win? I did. So. Oh, thank you. I just went through the same thing.
Please face the commission.
All, all I want you to.
This way.
So, what you guys talked about tonight, um, all the properties around what you're trying to put in, the solar, I advise everyone to contact the property owners with a letter, letting them know what this ordinance is about. And solar people don't scare me. It's a crock of bull crap, okay? APS right now, with my business, my usage is less than the taxes that is on my bill. I pay more taxes than my usage. So this APS is full of crap. That's how I feel. People that are, people need to write to your governor. Tell them how your APS bills are. They're just trying to scare you, all those woke blue places over there with solar. It's bull crap. You need to do your, and, 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 and. I was told I can't do this or that with my property. The property where y'all wanna put that solar thing,
Ma'am.
those people have more rights.
Ma'am, you're talking about stuff that we've been talking about all night.
Okay, just contact the people.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come up and let us know what they think? All right, I'm closing that portion of the meeting, and we're going to item G, which we've all been drooling for. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Folks, I wanna thank you very much for being polite. Awesome. And showing up and speaking about it. That's even better.
Folks, I wanna tell you, as living in the county of Chino, we can all put our.